Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for coming. 12:18 to 17:30 PM, San Jose School Board of Education meeting. I think we're going to talk about our candidate process. First off, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Coop?
Here.
Ms. Pasley?
Here.
Dr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Present.
Ms. Friesman?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here. Everyone, please join me in pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. Board members, our board norms are followed as follows. Prepare for board meetings. Listen to understand, engage in purposeful discussion, collaborate respectively, let's make evidence-based decisions, and demonstrate professional and ethical governance. Thank you. All right. First order of business, approval of agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a first and a second for the agenda. Is any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Go.
You've got to log in.
No. I sure do. Yes, I have just now. I was the lone wolf. Motion passes seven zero. First up, public engagement information.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and present some information and have a good conversation. But just quickly, for the benefit of the audience, remind you that we are the team of consultants you're working with from School Exec Connect. I'm Craig Larson, Marcia Chapalo, and Dave Benson. The three of us conducted the public engagement, so we're here to talk about that tonight and talk through several recommendations. The fourth member of our team is Tony Johns, who's one of the vice presidents of the company, and we're relying on her to help us with some recruiting. So she's not here tonight. She will be here in January, so I just wanted to say that. The first two items on your agenda are to discuss the public engagement process and then to look at our suggested superintendent profile, which is the one item we really hope you will eventually vote on after whatever discussion and amendment or whatnot you want to have. We kind of do those together in the document. You can see that those two run together. Marcia's going to kind of talk through the public engagement process itself, and then Dave's going to talk through the superintendent profile when you're ready to get to that point and have further discussion. And then, when that's done, we'll look at the interview process. I have a memo, and I'll kind of go over with you around that. And then, we had sent a document, and I ran copies because I forgot to ask Donna if she had given them. But I know you've got them electronically, which is just the salary comparison that you asked. Not quite sure what we'll do with that, but I assume it's for your information. And whatever questions you want to ask or further discussion about that, we'll add it. I don't think there's an action I'm aware of that I shouldn't be. I mean, it's just a chance for you to be better informed as a board as to kind of what salaries are in the area. So that's the overview of our discussions. And Marcia, I'll let you talk a little about the public engagement process. Start off, I am sure, with a thank you, as I already extended personally.
You stole my fun.
Directing you. I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, I will try not to talk too long about public engagement because I love public engagement, so I won't get into all that. But I would commend you for doing your process this way, because a lot of times people, perhaps they choose not to. And I'm going to echo what Craig said. I think on the kind of short turnaround, St. Joseph has been very busy these last couple of weeks with the focus groups and everything. But I think Bridgette and Stephanie have been especially busy, and I'm sure Donna with getting all of our memos. So we greatly appreciate that. And, you know, I would tell you, I think it's, this document serves a purpose, obviously, for looking for a new superintendent. But I also think it's a document that you're going to have to reflect on, and I think it's great for the communication staff to see it and digest it and so forth. But I think it's really good for board members to look at. It's about a superintendent search process, but you also find a lot about your community. You know, you might have thought that. Maybe there were some surprises for you. Maybe it reinforced some things. I like to say, in any district that I've been in, and I think these two gentlemen would agree with me, what I call in any district, there's quirks in any district. And quirks are not bad things. They're just who that district is. Because if you look at a lot of districts around, schools are schools, and in many times, they run the same way. But every district is unique. And I think from this report, hopefully, you found out more about St. Joseph. So that's, to me, is, I think it's an added benefit. If you remember, we had 13 focus groups, three town hall meetings, and the survey, I'm going to get my number here, was over 1,000. 1,091 people participated in it. And I think the benefit of the focus groups, I'll give you an example of what I did with the PTA leaders. What I told them, when you're invited to a focus group, you're invited there really for your perspective. And I told them that, well, they're a parent, but they're also a parent leader. And you might have people in the business community, well, they own a business, they may be on the chamber, but they might also be a parent. And so the focus group's value is to look at those leaders, perhaps the perspectives that they represent, and they're able to give you that feedback. You know, I told some of the parents, you know, you hear what parents talk about. Parents call PTA leaders all the time, I think, in most school districts. And so you're going to have that perspective from your parents. But I said, you might have a different perspective as a parent, so they could also participate in the survey if they wanted to. So I think the focus groups gives you maybe a little bit specialized information for people who work with the school district more. And then your town hall meetings, three, I think, was a good selection. We had, I think there were 47 participants. I think the first night, Dave and I were there, it was a little surprise snow, so that might have kept a few people away. But I think that with the backup with the survey, I think we find in most districts now that people are very used to doing online surveys, and I think they're much more popular than they were five to 10 years ago, for sure. So I think overall, you had a good turnout for what you needed to look at the perspectives that people have in your community. If you look at the, you know, what we'd have to say about this is that it's not a scientifically done survey. It's not a random sample or anything. But what we've tried to do, Craig has looked at a lot of the information, we've reviewed it, and put together the overall findings, and really kind of based on what we saw in the importance of the items, to use that in your search. And again, there's other issues there that I would encourage you to look at as board members, but we tried to take out the ones that were important for your search. If you look at the first part here, the overall findings, these were the primary identified strengths of the St. Joseph School District. These were taken from the surveys, but then the focus groups supported those, and I'm not going to read those to you.
Are you looking at this document?
I am.
I hate to, okay.
Yeah.
I just like to follow along, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. And I think that, you know, quality of teaching staff has probably been in every school district I've ever participated in, that high-quality teaching staff. I think what's a little bit different about yours is the resilient piece, employees. That's a little bit different, I think. So that was just something that caught my eye on that. The second one there, then, is the challenges facing St. Joseph School District. And with this one, I think the top one, really, everything falls below that because it's a vision for the direction of the school district. I mean, I think you have to have that first and foremost in overall, and probably, everything under that really falls under that vision, because it'll all pertain to that. And then the last one, I like asking this because in some searches that I've participated in, they ask for, you know, what are the, what are the things, the challenges? Well, then they don't ever go into, when you're trying to attract a candidate, what are the first priorities that when you come into a district? Because as everyone in education knows now, you can have 25 to 35 goals in a year. You probably can't accomplish all of them, but you need to be smart, and what's the top three to five goals that you're going to accomplish? And hopefully, you'll hit the others. But you really have to focus your time, and I think especially a first year in any superintendency has to be very focused. So that gives you there. Getting to know the district by visiting schools regularly, this came up in a variety of ways, I know, in the community groups, and obviously in the survey, too. But that people want someone to know them and what the district is about, and issues that are going on. So that kind of capstones that. Either of you want to add anything to that, Craig or Dave?
We'll let the board ask questions about it.
Okay.
I thought the quality of teachers is sort of worth highlighting, because we heard that everywhere.
Say that again.
We've heard that everywhere. The quality of teachers. People feel like, yeah, there's been a lot of things that have been difficult, that maybe we wish we'd done different, or did, you know, whatever, the negatives. But consistently, we heard that the schools rely on teachers who show up every day, caring about kids, trying to do a good job. Really, that resiliency was always a part of that, but it's also genuine respect for the teachers. That's a terrific platform to build on, because if that wasn't true, you know, you kind of, that's the fundamental foundation of the school district, right? So if that wasn't true, that'd be really an obstacle to overcome. But I think you can build on that, people respect the teachers, and take the district Any other questions, follow-ups? Dave?
At this point, the overall profile of the desired new superintendent, section one through 14, and I am going to go over these point by point, because we're going to ask you to approve the profile as either edited or anything that the board believes is an additional item. And these become the characteristics when we are screening that we will screen from. We have some candidates in the candidate pool that have applied on the School Exec Connect website, and I know that we will be doing screening activities between now and when we meet with you next on the 8th. So this is really an important outcome, and I hope that you see this profile reflects some of what was identified as key strengths and challenges and priorities. So number one, highly ethical and honest, displays integrity at all times. Works well with the board in setting direction for the district. Develops and spreads a clear vision for leading our schools that inspires others. And as Dr. Chapalo said, I think that vision piece really came out. People want to know where they're going. Understands finance and the business side of the district, and I would tell you that that came out repeatedly in all groups across the input process. Has excellent communication skills, speaks and writes well, and is a good listener. Works to nurture the strengths of each child as an advocate for children, students, excuse That came out a lot. Builds support, community support for the schools and districts. Is collaborative and includes others in the decision-making process. And those, we can definitely screen for that kind of activity. Develops consistent systems and processes throughout the district and has a passion for education. Is visible in the schools and community. Your educational faculty, staff, and administrators want a visible presence of the superintendent. Able to recognize and admit mistakes and takes corrective action, not just stay the course regardless. Holds others accountable to expectations. Has a deep knowledge of curriculum instruction and how students learn. This came out a lot in the discussion of characteristics of the new superintendent. I believe it was question four on the question sheet that we used. People want an educator. Has a warm, people-skill, approachable, energetic. This came out a lot as being a people person. Then in bold, before we throw it open for discussion, we don't always do this, but we need to be straightforward. Recommendation from the consultants, given the nature of the problems facing St. Joe District, the skills and characteristics needed for a new superintendent, we recommend hiring a school administrator with successful experience, improving in these three critical pieces: public trust in school district, organizational and management systems of the schools, and the effective school practices for the school board. We would like to move forward. You might ask how we would use the profile in the screening process. We will read documents looking for these key characteristics that are supplied in the application. I think, more importantly, when we do phone calls, we will ask these questions. We will develop our screening tool to ferret out information from people, both that are on a candidate's resume as references and people that we will know on the side that may not be listed.
Can I ask a quick question?
We're open.
You have under here, I really liked number five where it says, "good listener." I think that's key. And then also, be collaborative and includes others in the decision-making process. How do you quantify that? I mean, how would you, how do we figure out if the candidate is good in that area?
I think that's one of the questions, the key questions we would ask, the references and others that we will contact and ask the candidate. Give us examples of where you've been collaborative. Tell us about a time in which you've changed your mind because of input process. Give examples. Be specific. Candidates should be able to answer that kind of question. And then you'll see, when we get to the interview process, we have questions, a standard list of questions for you to consider as a board, and you will pick and choose. So you will want to pick and choose a question like that on the standard list to try to get at that concern. If a candidate can't come up with off the cuff, or they've ever changed their mind on the basis of an input process, you've got to question whether or not they're a collaborator or a teller.
Okay. Does that kind of fall into the same category as micromanagement?
It does.
Okay. I just want to clarify.
Most of us are trained in a structured interview process. It was called the Gallup process when I took it back in the age of the dinosaurs. So we know how to craft these questions to elicit the information that we want, and others will tell us.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you use this, use this search about both of our members?
Well, this is the profile.
Is there anything else that we want to add as board members? Or does this cover?
That's what we're asking.
The one through 14. Does that cover everything that we as board members want? Or is there anything else that we can think of that isn't here?
Do we need to add the one, two, three to the one fourteen, or that's something over the above the one fourteen? The question, the suggestions that you put in there.
The recommendations from the consultants?
Oh, the recommendations, those are areas of emphasis for us, but the one through 14 are the tools that we'll use to screen from.
We could change the language of that, though. If you didn't take away recommendation of the consultant, instead just have that paragraph be part of.
I think that would probably be cleaner.
Yeah, if that's the will of the board.
With the one through three, like with public trust in school districts, is that, are you going to be questioning them how they feel like they could best rebuild trust or how they've done that in the past? Is that what you're searching for in those cases, is to?
Yes. What are the tools that you've used in the past to build trust? Have they been successful? What have you, what have you found works well for you? And then we will correspond that with the answers we receive from others that know that individuals were.
So you're basically building their skill set with this, correct?
We're trying to, yeah. Trying to get them to divulge their skill set.
Okay.
How would you get that information? How would you go in the information that he's done and held the trust before? What would you look at in his history to, besides what he tells you? What would you, what you do?
I would contact the, I know that there are some NEA or MST A representatives here. I would contact some people that are rank and file, and I would also contact some of their direct subordinates. You'll get a good feel of that from that set. In a large enough district that would have a Chamber of Commerce, for example, you could contact the executive director of the Chamber, the professional staff. You know, your local politicians, I don't mean this in a Democratic or Republican way, but your mayor, your, your.
What about a parent?
Yeah, your executive director, the PTA council would be a good person. Those are the kinds of people that are not necessarily always going to be on the resume as references, but that you can dig down to.
So you would try and communicate with some parents, people that, regular people, so to speak, to see how, see how they feel? Because, you know, the staff who deals with them every day may have one opinion, but the parents who have had to deal with the superintendent or the staff for that matter about issues with their child, or know someone with issues with their child or student, they may have a different, you know, a different outlook on how that person resolved the issue or whether or not it was something that was conducive to good public relations or was out in that field.
We will try to dig deep.
And then with the number three, the effective practices of the school board, are you going to also talk to school board members, or do you recommend that we talk to school board members, or how does that work? I mean, do we need to kind of stay out of the weeds and let you get in the weeds and?
Let us get in the weeds on the confidential process. When it becomes final, when you screen to finalists, I have actually recommended that boards split up, and every board member calls another board member on the finalists. So if you bring three finalists, you may have to make three calls to get that connectivity. And those, then, are good conversations to have about that.
Because I don't want to get in the weeds if we don't need to be in the weeds.
Not during the confidential process, because we've committed to the candidates that we will not make this a public issue, but once they're finalists, absolutely.
Okay, very good.
In looking at your 14 points, which I think, and I think your summary statement is a good one, implicit in those 14 points, but not necessarily spelled out explicitly, is experience. You did include it in your summary. Was that by design that experience is not in there, or is it just left implicitly? And what was the feeling you got from the community about the type of experience they would like to see in the next superintendent? So if you read through the comments, I mean, each of us could respond to what we remember about that discussion in focus groups. I don't think it came up explicitly in every focus group. When you read through the comments, you hear a variety of opinions. Some people want somebody that's not from the district, that's fresh, you know, new. They may or may not have even thought in writing their comment whether the person would have superintendent experiences, you know, kind of, they just, some people, and there's a good number of people who said they'd like to see somebody outside the district. On the other hand, there's probably an equal number, even more, people who think, this is such a unique community, we need somebody that really understands St. Joe, maybe grew up, came through the system. You know, clearly, some folks who thought they're inside candidates would be given preference. So that's why we thought it was important for you to read those comments. I summarized them for you as best I could, but not as good as you just reading through there and kind of getting a sense of it yourself. And I'm only answering the question that I think you asked, which is, what is the community voice around this? Ultimately, it's your decision, right? I mean, we're informed by what the community wants, but sometimes, you know, 10 people all want something, and you know lots better that that's not the thing you want. We absolutely respect that it is the role of the board to decide here what's the criteria, what we're screening for, what we want.
It was interesting, though, to read some of the comments and see that there were quite a few that wanted us to go from within.
Yeah.
And then there were quite a few that wanted us to make sure it was nobody connected with the district. So, I mean, I'm not sure if it wasn't almost 50/50.
Yeah, that's the way it felt to me.
In the comments was, so, I mean, so you're right in the middle on that. That leaves you, in my mind, leaves you to, leaves you in a position to make sure you make the best choice.
Right.
Because it doesn't necessarily have to be someone outside, but it doesn't necessarily have to be someone inside.
Right. The three of us had a conversation about writing this recommendation, and, you know, the truth is, that recommendation reduces the number of candidates who fit the criteria, right? Because we're talking about experience there.
I was going to say, those three points are going to bring us in someone very experienced. Because to build public trust, that's a lot of years. You know, it doesn't, doesn't a year or two?
Give me a time when you did it, when you asked those questions. Give me a time when you did it, run examples, what evidence do you have, so forth. So that's making the job harder to bring you a large set of candidates. No doubt about that.
Quality is better than quantity, I think.
That's exactly the way it went on.
Well, and then, kind of to piggyback off of that question, is that, you know, we've kind of had the discussion, candidates who have large school district experience versus those that have small school district experience. Did that come up preference-wise, and anything really that you all can, off the top of your head, think?
Some of the comments said they wanted people with large school experience, but weren't a lot of comments on the other on that. And you look at the three of us, we're all past superintendents, we have quite different careers. Dave has been in, how many districts?
This will make it sound like I couldn't hold a job.
I was going to say, you're really old, so go ahead.
You were just passing along that experience to several communities.
Yeah. Six superintendences.
But starting in small and growing.
Growing.
Growing in size and complexity and so forth. That's relatively common, but we stayed and kind of built our way through and then ended up with a superintendent at the end of our career. So, I don't know exactly how that fits, but you, the individual could come through either of those patterns. But we're asking that they really have some genuine background in improving public trust in the school district. And, you know, you could have had a career where that really wasn't ever an issue.
Exactly.
I mean, that's part possible.
I saw, I didn't see anyone really say, "Don't bring us anyone from a small district." I just saw.
I just saw a lot of, they wanted a comparable district size, or a large school district experience. Not anybody saying, "Don't give us anybody smaller." It's just saying they wanted to make sure that they had that kind of experience. So I'm not sure if that eliminates anybody. I'm just saying that I think that was a preference to those that even commented on that particular issue.
The staff would probably answer this, and I'm guessing that they would say, one of the things that they're really proud of is you've got a staff development program of some duration, and it's pretty robust. It's focused on helping individual students, and led by a number of administrators, but also superintendents and teacher leaders and so forth. So if you come from too small a district, there isn't any structure like that, right? So that's a concern that the staff, they didn't particularly express that, so I'm intuiting that from kind of what I heard. And when I watched, I happened to do the focus group with principals, and they were having a very good discussion around data, arguing each other, and, you know, that was a good meeting. And then they did the focus group as a part of that meeting. But they, you know, they were there as they are regularly, and taking care of the work that the district needs them to collaborate on, frankly.
Yeah, it's just, because I grew up in a very small, small school district. And then coming here, this is huge compared to where I grew up. So sending my daughter to an elementary school that was over five hundred students, and we had K through five, maybe five hundred students. So this is a very, and I can see that they're different beasts. I mean, you know, on a good day, you know, it's a beast in a large school district. And it's just, it's different skill sets, I think. So I think that that's the point that I always try to make, I think, with people, is that in the small school districts, the superintendent has to do a lot of jobs. In our district, we have other administrators, and so you don't have to do that micromanagement. And you have support there. And collaborating with that support makes everybody's life a lot easier.
Given the complexity of the experience that the community and the board is looking for in this process, and this is one thought, and I'd welcome other board member's thoughts. Ideally, we'd find a candidate who could fill a long tenure of excelling this district forward. If a candidate doesn't present that may be able to fill a long tenure, I think I would also welcome any interim candidates as well, if they could fit this kind of description. I'd welcome other thoughts from board members.
We've already done an interim. I would rather get a permanent person.
That's our goal, is a permanent. Permanent, but I know where you're coming from, in case you didn't. And, you know, I saw a lot of the comments where we wanted someone who's ready to dig into the community, and stay here a while, and be around, and know the community, and become a part of the community. And I say to that, maybe. Because knowing you have six superintenances, I'm sure you were great in all of them. There were reasons why you stuck around the amount of time that you did in each of those. And sometimes, what happens is what happened to us when we were burnt with the superintendent who was around for fourteen years, you know? So, yeah, I just would rule out, you know, if they're not committed to living the rest of their life in St. Joe, but I would hope we would get something that's more permanent, a commitment from them that's more permanent.
I don't have any expectations for the superintendent to be here five years, ten years, twenty years, or two years. But I think it'd be wrong to use the word interim under any circumstances. I think they should come here with the idea that the decisions they make now, they're going to have to live with going forward. And I'm afraid if you use the word interim, but then they may make some decisions they know they're not going to have to live with, I think that would be mistaken.
I would agree with that. We're not advertising for an interim. Length of time, I mean, that'll be a good conversation if you get a veteran that's got a lot of years. They may really have all the experience you want, but the truth is, you know, they're not going to give you ten years, it's just not going to happen.
And honestly, isn't the, kind of the life expectancy of a superintendent about three to five years?
Two point seven.
Two point seven?
Usually a contract or two.
Yeah. They don't stay around for fifteen years anymore.
I'm just saying that the superintendents we've placed, both across the whole group of associates and in Missouri, have way exceeded that. So that's why you see this recommendation. We don't think you can, I mean, you need a special person that can come in here and re, they have a mission. They want to become a part of the community. They want to make a positive difference.
And they might want to do that for two or three years, and then they're done.
They might.
So, I mean, ultimately, I want the right person who wants to come here for the right reason, to really, truly make a difference, not only in our district, but in the community. So whether they're willing to give us two, or three, or five years, right now really isn't relevant. It's more of just getting the right person who knows how to help make things better. I think that's the more important question.
This is not the first time you, I think I just heard you use the word mission. I don't think this is the first time you've used that word. I think you mentioned it in another meeting, but I think that, I think that word resonates with me, and I think that's, I personally believe that's the right person, who sees this community and this district as something that they want to dig into and help rise from the ground again.
In the focus group that the United Way held, and they had a number of their partners, all in service organizations, one of the participants was a pastor. And really, she, I don't think we'd said the word mission, I don't remember that, but she brought it up in the way that I actually agree, which is, people who in school work who really care about their job have a similar mission to a pastor. You know, it's how do we move the organization forward? We're very sensitive to the individual needs of all kinds of people, because they're all different, different schools. I mean, and she really went on in some length to make that analogy, and I agree with that. And I think, you know, that's always true, in my mind, in our mind, but it's really true here. You know, the person needs to come because this is the work they want to do. It's a calling.
It's a calling.
And I have all faith that we're going to be able to do that, because if we look to the profile that you have here, which does accent the fact that we want an instructional leader, that's going to be a person with the heart of a teacher. And they're out there, and, you know, we don't get into education for the money, and the money will play some part into it, but really for the right person, it probably won't. For the location and what St. Joseph has to offer as a community, maybe not so much, but the challenge of this school district, I'm sure there is that right person out there.
And I can't wait to meet them. Are you asking us to make a vote to accept these fourteen plus your three?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I would make a motion that we accept this as the overall profile, including your one, two, and three, just to add it on to the bottom of the list, however you want to do that.
Second.
We have a first and second on the superintendent's profile. Any more discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. President, I love the word mission, because mission leads to developing goals. And when you have goals, then every decision you make is either, does it support the goal, or does it not support the goal? It makes decision-making very easy when you have a mission followed by supportive goals.
Okay, so the next solo business will be the board interview process.
Which, you should have a memo that kind of goes through a few pages. We've kind of covered everything that's covered in that second paragraph, but, you know, it's not a bad idea to just say it orally for everybody to hear, which is, it is not our intent to bring you five to seven candidates who just reflect the best people we could find. Instead, we're going to bring you candidates who we think can do this job, want to do the job, have the mission, have the fit. I don't know what that'll mean to number. I do think it's going to affect the number, but, you know, maybe we'll have that many come, and that would be great for all of us. But if we bring them, that's because we think they are a fit, and they have those three criteria, plus they meet the, so that's important. And that could affect kind of the discussion on the eighth, because we'll have whatever honest discussion there is, based on the number of people we have, who they are, and, you know, we're going to present those to you. But does that, that make sense?
Well, how much longer do we have the application process open?
It runs, the application is probably open until the weekend before the eighth, but that doesn't give us much time to screen.
Right.
But those of us that hire all the time know that it's always a good idea to take that person who shows up at the last minute, because somebody talked to him, and they were somewhere, and all of a sudden, oh.
Are we rushing it? Do we need a couple more weeks?
I'm not asking for that. I'm just saying, we've got three more weeks before we present to you. The advertisements are out there. I would be honest with you, they've driven very little interest. I mean, you know, not there's anything wrong with advertisements or anything, it's just, this is a hard job. You know, so we're recruiting, we're talking to people, that's probably where we're going to find our candidates.
Okay, well, again, quality versus quantity. We want quality, so.
I just wanted to make sure that--
I'm not going to be huge in the upset.
Absolutely agree on that. So, the way I did the rest of the memo is kind of item by item as we go through, and I don't know that I have to read each set of points, but I want to make sure that we leave here really understanding what's going to happen at each step along the way. So on the eighth, it's a closed-door meeting, we'll bring you candidates, we'll have a discussion about quality and quantity, and kind of where we are, recommend people to you to interview. We will have paperwork on them, we will have, as David said, we will have talked to people that can give some color to what we've learned about them, you know, we've talked to the, maybe a board member, you know, that kind of thing, whatever. And we will have a short video self-introduction.
Isn't that like a three-minute video?
Three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes, okay.
And that's the first day of your, of the--
On January eighth.
That's on the eighth. So that's just when we're bringing you a set of people to look at. And then we have a discussion. And really, at that point, I mean, this is always true, but, you know, boards can accept those. That's our goal, is we brought you people that we think you'll accept, but you may not for some reason. And we're committed to go on, so it may change timeline, but that may be the right thing to do, right? So that conversation's important. Do we, are we ready to go to the next step? And of course, until you have a contract, you're never done. I mean, it's always, you can always adjust the process, but, so anyway, that will be an important conversation for you to decide, do we want to talk to these individuals that we present to you? Then on the following Saturday, we would have a closed-door first-round interviews, which gives the board a chance to meet the people you agreed to interview face-to-face. We help you with a set of questions. David said, you know, we have a, it's kind of a, what we call a question bank. It's a hundred and fifty questions, and it's divided into themes or areas. But you can write your own question, you know, if there's a question you really like, or you want to ask something in particular, there's no problem. But we advise in that first round of interviews, everybody gets the same question, so you agree on that set of questions. We have a form that we make up that you can use for note-taking, has a question written out, and you can follow up on that. You know, on the eighth, we'll show you that, we'll let you kind of, you know, usually a good idea, take some time on the eighth, actually agree on the question. So you don't show up Saturday morning not knowing. It's much better to have that form done, and everybody's kind of agreed. So if you've got a special question, and we will have that question bank out to you in advance, so you can draw from that as well.
So if we agree on the set of seven questions that we're going to ask--
Or it'll probably be fifteen, just--
So we probably each get more than one. What if there is a follow-up question to a question?
Clarifying question around that question.
Okay.
And we tell the candidates, part of our facilitation is, you know, here's how long the interview is, here's how many questions. Because one of the skills is, you know, can you get to everything? Can you go through? And we can facilitate that a little bit, you know, running out of time, or, you know, whatever kind of comments, kind of, give each candidate, you know, a fair hearing. This isn't in the notes, but it's always, on my mind, is that interviewing is not the same thing as doing the job. Does that make sense?
Very much.
So, yeah, there's kind of no way around doing these interviews, right? You can't just live the life of the person, know who they are. But in a lot of ways, the background checks, talking to people, knowing what they're like, what they've accomplished in the past, is a much better indicator of what they're going to be like on the job than how they do Saturday morning.
Because some people just don't interview well. I mean, that might not be their--
Unfortunately, that's exactly right.
But I mean, it's true.
The worst scenario is the opposite.
Yeah, and that's--
Our fourth caller.
Yeah, so I think that that's important, that, yeah, we understand the difference.
So anyway, we try to give everybody a good fair hearing, and gives you a chance to talk to all of them. And then at the end of that day, we either have another interview or two, or if we were able to do them all in one day, then we just come back on the sixteenth and talk about where you are with the candidates that you've interviewed to that point, and who do you want to move forward.
So on the thirteenth, we could have five, seven, whatever we come up with.
Our general advice is not seven.
Don't. Just five, maybe.
Five's a nice number.
Five at the top.
But six, I mean, if you have six and you want to get them done, but some of that is also, if we had six, like, there might be a candidate who can't interview on the Saturday, for some reason, you know, in their life, but if they could come back on Tuesday. So it's nice to have a second option for the candidates as well, as, or not interviewing somebody that you just kind of get burned out on the process.
Because this is probably going to be, I mean, an all-day.
All-day.
Because if they're each almost an hour long.
Yeah, so if you have five, and again, not knowing what the number is, that'll make a lot of difference. So we can talk about that when we're actually setting it up. But, you know, five would be with the lunchtime, and people arriving a little early and getting settled, I mean, you're looking at a pretty normal workday there. So then on Tuesday, the meeting, and I didn't say, but we will share the facilitation of these, and one of us will be there for all these meetings, assuming you want that.
Yeah.
I get the good that you do. So, but all three of us won't be there. I mean, I just so, you'll know, one of us will be there. And we kind of help the discussion go well. I mean, once you're looking at the candidates, we need to stay a little in the background. I mean, we're into the process of making sure it's fair, and that, you know, and we do listen. We learn about the candidates, too, but we try not to answer a question that you might want to ask, or sometimes more to ask, which is, who would you pick? That's your job. I mean, literally. Our job at that point is to say, you know, it's really not a fair question to us. We would be glad to give you more information about a candidate, we'd be glad to go research or something, and, you know, that's why we're there, is to help. But really, once you've picked who you're interviewing, then you decide collectively as a board, kind of where you want to go.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add to any of that.
No.
So then, the harder discussion probably is how to move forward after you've picked your finalist, which could be three, obviously could be two if we have a smaller number. We don't really like two, but that could happen. And frankly, let's just say, it's possible. You'll have met that group, you'll have done the interview, maybe you'll have one. I'm not saying that's right. We discourage that. But that's, the quality issue is real. I mean, you have to, you know, think about that and so forth.
Well, and I don't think that we would want to bring somebody back if we really didn't feel like--
No.
--they were going to be a good fit. So why would we want to waste their time coming and traveling back and all the expense?
We'll all be a little flexible, and we'll all just kind of talk honestly about this and figure out where we are, step by step. But we wrote this as the way we would normally assume that you have three finalists coming back, three different days, so that the candidate is in the district for that day, another candidate another day, so that, you know, they're not here at the same time. And we suggest that they all go through a similar process, and we'll talk about the details of that in a minute, but kind of an overriding reality is, you've already met that candidate, you've interviewed them, you want them to come back. So your questions to them at that point may be quite unique, because you want to follow up on specific things that that candidate invokes in your thinking, but you don't need to ask the same questions of all the candidates. You may, you may have something that you're, you've talked among yourselves, and you want to hear each candidate address a particular issue. That's, that's fine, too. That could be a part of the process, but that's, that's something we need to discuss and help you kind of prepare for those questions.
Well, I'd imagine, I would imagine that the first round is going to be a little more thirty thousand feet, and then when you get into the other, the second interview-- 30,000 feet, and then when you get into the other, the second interview, that it would really be kind of zoning in on very specific things that would be pertinent to our district.
And their background.
And their background.
Absolutely.
And how they would fit.
So, the question that, that we talked about when we were with you all on the 20th of November was whether or not to have committees or not, and the opinions varied on the board. We're proposing to you what we normally recommend, which is that you have a committee of parents and citizens, a committee of staff members, heavily teachers, a committee of students that interview each of these candidates on the day they're here. But that those committees not overlap, so that they're a unique group of people, and we explain to them both in writing in advance and literally facilitating that day when we're with them, your role is to give the board feedback. Here's the feedback form, at the end of this, you need to fill that out, we're going to collect those, we're going to give them to the board. They're going to review those before they interview the candidate later today. So it's an immediate process of you saying, what did you think about that, that candidate? Give them some prompts around that. But also, what questions would you like to see the board ask that candidate? So, in 45 minutes, 50 minutes that they have, they may not have been able to follow up on something that's on their mind. So, it's a good thing for you all to kind of get a sense of that.
So, where you have interview with committee of staff members, does that include our downtown administrators, our directors?
What I recommend there, and I may have left it off of this, no.
No.
Interview discussion with direct reports to the superintendent. We actually asked them to give you a, a feedback form too, but that's a little different format. We usually, if, if the timing works out, that can even be, you know, informal lunch or a chance for them to sit down together. And, a little Q and A back and forth. It really helps the superintendent candidates know, who am I going to be working with? They may have a question about something going on in the district that that, you know, that's a good form to find out, they may help them even in interviewing, talking to you all.
So really.
So it's a little different.
So that's more of a conversation, whereas the other committees would be, that you all would be leading those, that you would have a set of questions that you would ask the candidates at each one of the?
We kind of do the same thing with the committee. We've got a bank of questions, by just that point, we've shaped it around the things you're looking for in the candidate. So then we ask the committee members to pick, pick a question or two that you would like to ask from the bank. And, and if they bring a question, we can assess whether that question's all right. But it's important that the whole committee knows that they're going to ask that particular question. So, it takes 20 or so minutes to kind of get them oriented.
Let's assume for a minute that we have three candidates that we're going to go through this process with. So, interview with the committee of parents and citizens, approximately how many people do you think is appropriate for each one of those? Because we'd have three, three different groups, the way I understand it.
So my, my answer to that is, in some ways it doesn't matter. You get more feedback when more people are sitting in the room, so, but they can't all ask an equal number of questions, right? So let's say, and this happened in, in Park Hill, literally happened, we had 120 citizens and parents that wanted to be involved, so we had three groups supporting. And we had to find a big room and kind of set it up, and we told them upfront, you may not get to ask a question, we're going to have, you know, in this order. More typically, it's 15 to 20, I mean, that's a real normal number, but it, it's whatever it, and you can shape that, because if, if you don't have open invitation, then you can decide as a board, you're going to invite, similar to the focus groups, you're going to invite people that you, you would like to hear from. I would tell you from doing, not so much focus groups, but March has been to all of the town halls, there are some people who are pretty skeptical. And I think it's to your advantage to do as little as you can to give them any reason to be skeptical. They sit and listen to an interview, what's a heart, we'll make sure they don't dominate.
So you're, you're thinking more of a public, like a town, a town hall type of?
No, you know, I still, it's still not a town hall. It's in a closed room and so forth.
Okay, how would we, what process do you see us using to invite the right people to get there? Do we invite them by invitation or charge a nation?
I think when I sit in here, and it's a normal process, put an invitation on your website if you're interested in being involved, kind of let them.
Okay.
Come to you.
Self-select.
That's one way. But you can also suggest to Bridget, here's, you know, I like, I mean, all those people that, that I did as United Way would be great to have on the.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, it's like, if we, if we chose as the board, like, some people from each one of these different groups.
Right.
To be in that particular group, and that way we would sort of have an idea who was going to be there.
So it ends up as a.
Did we, did we take, did we take names from the attendees of the various groups?
I think.
No.
Okay. We didn't include names in the notes, but I think Bridget could probably follow up and find out.
Well, okay, we've got some time here, so let's think through how, how the best way is, because I think most of us, I know I'm surely in favor of having as much public input as we can. And of course, all those that can be on our, on our website and televised on.
So the difference between a town hall forum and, and some search firms use that as a format, they put a candidate in front of a town hall forum, that's not what we're recommending. It's a, you know, closed-door meeting. But, if you want to come, you know, tell us you want to come, we'll invite you, we'll tell you when it is, you are a C P S, I'm going to be there, and we'll count on your attendance. And I'm, I'm sure you've got several citizens who will ask to do that, right?
Yeah. And the staff members would be somewhat the same.
Somewhat the same, although, you know, usually you have to think about how are you going to get a staff member available and so forth. So, working with, with your organized local groups is a good way to kind of make sure that they feel like they've been represented. And then, if you've got a teacher who absolutely wants to be here, to make sure that the fine arts is advocated for, I'm good with that.
And then I'm very much in favor of what you said for the, the direct reports, they should be, the direct reports should be there, because that is going to be that person's team.
Right.
And, yeah.
So I just want to clarify, so we might suggest some citizens from the focus groups, but then we're still going to leave it open to those who want to come in, who see it on the website and say, hey, I'm a parent, I want to come, or I'm a taxpayer, and I want to be in one of those groups, and then we will include those people also.
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, that's excellent.
We're proposing.
Right, and I, I think the, the open focus group presents a problem in that, one of our jobs is to make sure that only job occupation-related questions.
Yeah. I see that as a challenge.
Are asked, so if somebody comes in and asks an inappropriate question, we're going to have to step in. Well, that necessarily doesn't help your transparency issue, because we would be seen as, as interfering with, with, with the question. But it is our responsibility to see to it that, at the end of the day, it's a legally acceptable process that's gone through.
So that could be very well clearly communicated on the website, where people put in their names, you know, and it may be that you'll come and you won't even ask a question, but I think everybody that comes can fill out a form.
Form.
And then, you know, and then we get that, feed that that way, whether they ask a question or not, you know, but make it very clear on the website that these are job-related, very atypical questions at the, you know, at the point of a superintendent, and, yeah.
Right, and I would assume that it's best that the board, board members not be there.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
So the rest of the day though, you're pretty involved.
Yeah.
So you show up an hour early and look at those feedback forms.
Yes.
And get ready.
Good.
And then, then, one other thing to make sure you, you want to do, because I had a couple of boards not want to do this, is start the interview with the candidate with essentially a role-playing experience, where they present to you, and you can have them present on something that you want them to talk about, or typically, we have found it kind of works, just let them pick something to present on. It is, it is a role-play in the sense of, whatever they're presenting on, you may or may not follow up on that, but what they present on makes a difference, right? Are they somewhat aware of the things you would care about? Do they want to? I mean, we would encourage them to make a presentation that's relevant to the situation.
So is it like a five or 10-minute presentation?
10, with 10 of question and answer. So it takes 20 minutes, occasionally 25, if, you know, if you ask a lot of questions. And that's a good thing for them.
If they're aware of the topic, then maybe you do. Well, by that point in the process, they should know what's relevant to us and what we're looking for.
Well, that goes Google's.
And so hopefully it would be relevant, their topic would be relevant to what we're.
Well, and they might be making a pitch for what they want to do when they come here.
They could, they could pick something that they think is really an important part of their priorities as they arrive and they want to talk on that. That isn't, we don't say to do that, we're just, something that, but I'll tell you a story that I don't, I think is appropriate, is that we had a very leading candidate who didn't prepare very well and went to their counselor, and they were superintendent, coming in to be a superintendent, and they went to a counselor that they admired, and asked to give them a presentation. And so they did that presentation around discipline and how to support kids, and it had a focus, but clearly, it, it just was off-putting to the board. It was kind of like, not well-prepared, not really in that man's heart, you know, not that he disagreed with the topic, but, so.
Well, it wasn't his work.
We encourage people, do something you want to do, so, I mean, that, that really makes sense, because it will, it does make a difference. I don't know if I'm saying that very well, but is that?
Well, you want them to make a presentation where it's coming from their heart and from their, from themselves. You don't want them to just be reading.
Well, it sounds like that.
Somebody else's.
See the value in making a presentation.
And, and I think that person would have said, well, you said it was a role-play, so maybe we need to be careful how we describe it. But, you know, so I came and I did a presentation as if I was doing a presentation. And the person's actually fairly good on his feet, I mean, it wasn't an issue about that, it just was off-putting. So, I'm not willing to dwell on that, but, and it does matter how the person presents, right?
Yeah, that's a lot of skills in 1 through 14 with public speaking and personality. I mean, there's a ton of things in a role-play that would be very relevant to what we're looking for.
Well, I'm going to say I'm still not crazy about this process. But now that you've explained it a little bit, I think I'm, I'm a little more at ease. I, I just want people to understand that hiring the next superintendent is the seven of us. And I don't want, I think my trepidation is, is that I, I just know too many people in the community that think their opinion is the opinion, and I just don't want people to then put board members in an awkward position to bias them for or against a certain candidate, because we're going to have all the information, more so than anybody else that comes in and listens to people answering questions or not. We're going to have a lot more information. I just want people to be respectful of that, and while we value input, the seven of us are the ones who have to live with this.
That's right. Input is not decision-making.
Right.
The board make, the Board of Education are the decision-makers. And I would emphasize that no individual is going to see more than one finalist. So it keeps it an input process, which means they have no basis from which to try to lobby you.
Well, you're going to have buy-in from the community if they don't get a chance to say, you know, what they think about people or know a little bit more about them, you know?
Well, again, I think we'll have a lot more information that, you know, someone in the community would have. So I just want us to be mindful of that, and, and it's in our norms that we make evidence-based decisions, and that we, when we're looking at that, that, that has its place, but ultimately, we have to be able to live with our choice at the end of the day.
So, what I'm hearing then is, the reason that you're saying that the focus group is only going to see one candidate is to prevent what we're talking about, right?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. I was trying to figure out how that worked, but now I've got it.
I find this a very interesting process, and I've not ever seen it before, and I'm really anxious to see how it works, but I can see where you're going to cut off a lot of people. There's a candidate, or a community people aren't going to be able to compare the candidates, because they're only going to be able to have visited with one.
True.
Yeah, it's our job to compare the candidates, but yeah, but then again, we see how to get.
But the feedbacks of people might mean things that we didn't notice, or somebody may have experiences that we don't personally have, so they can share something with us about someone that could be valuable to us when we're making a decision. So that's why that's important, whether they see them all or that they don't.
One thing I was going to add, and I think I said this the first night that, that we met, I think it's important for the candidate, you're looking for the best fit, the right time in the St. Joseph School District, and it gives that person a chance to meet parents, students, and I, again, I think the fit is extremely important, and I've gone through interviews like that, and what I like about this one is, everyone's not interviewing all three of them. But that person comes in, they meet all the board members, but they get a chance to see community, parents, students, and it gives you more of a flavor. Do I fit here? Which is what you want.
Because we don't want them coming to the very end and we say, we want this candidate, and they say, back out, just because they haven't had a feel for enough to be able to make a decision themselves.
I think, I think we as a board are in a position where we're wanting to look for ways of improving community engagement, and I think if this process goes well, this is just another step of improving community engagement. And so, I actually kind of like this process that, that you're proposing.
Even, even though the board makes a final decision, the success of our decision depends on the public, not on our perception, it depends on the public. So I really want them to be involved, because long-term, they're going to be the ones to decide if we made the right decision.
So will you do these groups in the way that you have them listed, so that way that the administrators are the ones, the directors will be the last kind of contact they have before they come to us?
I did list it that way for that purpose.
Okay, is it, um, does it really matter?
No.
Okay.
Normally what we would do is get Bridget to help us.
Bridget!
You know, when can we do students, when, when can you get parents here? You know, so you set it up, you know, around the timeframe that works for the people that you're inviting in.
Typically after an informal lunch, there's a little break for the candidate to just regroup and then come back for the board and dinner component.
While you're reviewing the feedback, they have an hour, you know, get ready.
So can I ask then, looking back at the schedule, the January 16th meeting's at 4:00 PM, which is different, so note that from our 5:30, but we're talking about those meetings now that are on the 20th, the 23rd, and the 24th. Of course, the 20th being a Saturday, that might be an 8:30 start if we see that that's a necessary thing, is that correct?
Yeah.
But what are we looking at for the 23rd and the 24th? Are we looking at 5:30 or are we looking at earlier than 5:30?
Why do we choose 4 o'clock for that Tuesday? Just to give us more time?
So the reason I put it that way, and it's all adjustable, that's why we're in this conversation.
Okay, because that's a Tuesday.
20.
Are you going to be in town?
So that, that, that's a chance, if we need it at 4 o'clock for another interview, or even a 4 and a 5. The board could start at 5:30 if there's no interview, I mean, that would be a normal thing to do.
So we can be flexible on that.
Right.
Up until we're getting closer to that.
And you can start at 5:30 with an interview, it just extends the time.
Just makes a late night. So we just know going in that those are flexible, the times, we'll, we'll get.
We'll come out of the 8th with a pretty good handle on all that.
Right. So then you're not going to be in the state.
I'll adjust this, try to just.
Talking about the 29th.
I know the days. That's one hour.
Okay.
Is there, is there any more action that we need to take tonight to move forward?
I think I sense of what the board wants on this, yeah, I don't think you need I don't think you need a vote, as you can go forward. Dave raises the issue of what we're going to do on the 29th, and you want to address that, Dave, or that's the last step?
Yes, I noticed that one of my standard recommendations is not here. The 29th, you really need to have your legal counsel present.
Okay, yeah, we would have...
Mr. Hatley was intricately involved in negotiating the contract and lease summit with the counsel for the select candidate, and reflected the discussion, and was able to reflect the discussion to the legal representative of the candidate and the candidate very effectively for the, in behalf of the board. So I would strongly add that bullet to your consideration to have your legal counsel, if it's Mr. Hatley, then it's...
We would definitely want him there for that.
You would want there.
So is it normal practice that, so the, whomever we're going to offer a contract to, they more than likely have an attorney of their own? And so is it more of attorney to attorney? Or is it board president to candidate? How, how does that kind of work itself out?
I've done it both ways.
I mean, if it's board president to candidate, it's probably not negotiations. It's just, I'm pleased to let you know, we're interested in you and kind of, but negotiations are real. I mean, I think you have to allow that process. That happens behind the scenes, so... And I, I've known candidates who said, you know, I don't, I don't need to have a lawyer, I trust that the board will treat me fairly, or she will be treated fairly. And, you know, there's no right or wrong answer to that, it depends upon the situation.
Is that to the preference of the candidate, too? If they choose to come with representation or not?
Well, that's absolutely right. They should get the offer from the board representative directly. And then, if they get into a negotiation, or they have an attorney involved, that's their preference. You should be prepared for that by having Mr. Hatley here.
Okay.
Is it considered a bad sign if they come with five attorneys? Yes.
Mr. Sheen, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may be a dumb question, but has anybody ever discussed the salary range for this position?
It's a good segue.
Part of our discussion tonight, right?
It's next on the list.
Last piece of the discussion.
All right. I'll wait.
Good segue.
So you guys are set on what we're looking for?
Take the sense that this, this is the process you want to follow, and obviously, we will tailor a little bit if we meet on the...
Okay.
Do you have the salary schedule? I ran copies just to make sure everybody has, has everybody got a copy?
Yes.
This is something that Larry and Lori helped us develop, which is a setup, 10 school districts, somewhat geographically close, somewhat similar in size, although Smithville's obviously way smaller, but it's close, and we just agreed. I thought you ought to see 10, so we came up with 10. And this form provides, you know, if you haven't ever done this before, it's good to kind of see what different districts do, right? At one extreme, districts can put only salary, you know, literally no benefits, only salary. And at the other extreme, you know, they keep the salary perhaps a little lower, and that can be by discussion with the candidate for a variety of reasons. But they want whatever benefits make sense. So that's what the lawyers usually end up talking about. And you all can talk about it. You can say, you know, this, we don't want to provide, you know, I'll just give a common recommendation. Whatever you do for your other administrators, if you do more than that for the superintendent, you probably need to think about that.
Yeah, right.
I mean, why are you doing that? And there could be a good reason. That superintendent's come from a district where they've got that benefit, and if we don't do it, they're not going to come. I mean, you know, family health insurance or something like that. So it could be that there's, there's a discussion to be had, but typically, benefits, and if you're the superintendent, you two weigh in on this, you don't want to have such a rich package that already all of your fellow administrators look at you like, whoa.
What were they thinking?
Yeah.
That's just going to be angst from right off, so we don't, definitely don't want that.
Right. So when I look at that list, it doesn't help very much about the salary ranges, other than, you know, it's probably not going to be $150,000, right? So you, you as a board, and I don't think in public tonight, you need to resolve it, but you need to have discussion and think about, given what people are paying superintendents around you, this date is one year old, incidentally, so you can kind of look at it and think about it.
When do you need, when do you need that input? When do you need this input?
On the 8th of January.
When, what we'll do, the question about the 8th of January is very helpful. What we'll do on the 8th is anybody we present, we'll give you the best understanding we can of what they're expecting, what their current salary is, what benefits that are important to them. Maybe they want to go up.
Can you tell them what our current superintendent is being paid, that kind of thing?
You know what would be helpful is, we had a copy of that contract, that'd really be helpful.
Bridget, isn't it on the website?
Oh, no. I thought we had, I thought everyone had access to that.
Salary is public information.
Yeah. But salary and current benefits would be helpful for us.
Well, I think that Joe would have a copy of that, so I think that our attorney should be able to forward that to you.
If we could fill this chart out in a seminar...
I think, just a question, would it be better, more beneficial if we actually had the benefits of what our head assistant superintendent and the team under, or what their benefits are and what our current superintendent's benefits are?
Well, it's both, I think any of both things.
Yeah, I don't know that the current superintendent's benefits are important.
Well, it is in comparison with the rest of these, yeah.
Somebody who's looking at it will want to know how much we're paying now.
Well, but not if we, not if we decide we're going to give the same benefits to our new superintendents we have our current staff, so...
Oh, I think that's pretty much where it is.
And it's pretty much lined up now.
Our benefits are pretty good.
Uh-huh. And it's lined up. As far as being the same.
Well, we'll get that to you. You say you need that by the 8th? Or you need it before that?
Yeah, we, I think we need it before that, because we're in a conversation with somebody and they say...
Okay, so we can get that to you, from the lawyer or Larry. That's her contacts. And the board will get that together and get you that information.
So we want two things, and we want the benefits for our current superintendent, and we also want the benefits for our, for the next pleasure now.
The standard...
The standard benefit package.
I think Wes can get that for you pretty easily. And then I think Joe can just...
Well, Joe can plug it in for you and get you some numbers.
Okay, Wes, when Lori and I get that, we'll send to the rest of the board members, so maybe we'll...
Thank you.
Don, I can, you, Don, can you make that happen?
See you. Thank you.
Wes was just here, he just looked, so he heard that, too.
He heard it, so he, he might be going and working on that right now as we speak.
Make sure you follow up.
Bridget, if you don't mind, get in touch with Wes and make sure that happens, right?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions, discussion?
Before we get off the salary, I think it should be, I'm just talking here, I guess you agree or disagree, but maybe a salary raise, depending on the experience of the person, but maybe start here, maybe go here, it depends on what they bring to the table.
So, and we can all weigh in on this, but if I understand what you're saying, I think that's exactly right, the way I would think about it, too, is that rather than say, this is what we're going to pay.
Right.
You, you know you're in a range, you're not likely to go outside of that. You know, I guess if you found somebody who wanted less, why wouldn't you do that? But typically, you know, it's, that's the range. But then you look at the person's background, what they've been making, what rationale they have, or whatever it is that, you know, makes sense to them. Or you can have the same conversation by yourself, this is what we want, we know what they're making, lots of years and...
I think our benefits, well, I, personally, I think we have really good benefits with all of our staff, teachers, too. But I think the benefits are at such a rate that that's another, maybe if you don't make as much as you thought you were going to make, the benefits make up the difference.
Well, one of the reasons we wanted you to have all this data, that you could see...
Yeah, and you need to get all the data from us.
Salary is one thing, but then the total cost of the contract is another, and it varies a lot, right? I mean, you look at it, different districts do different ways.
And I would say, too, to the board and to the public, too, if you look at the profile, we're asking for someone with experience, we're looking for someone who's probably been in a large school district, so, you know, we're not looking at a little bit of money to draw somebody in. I mean, what our expectations are for this new president...
We can't afford some of these salaries.
Some of them we won't be able to afford, but it's not going to be a little bit of money during this conference.
A younger person, though, that's, you know, very, you know, could be very attractive. You never know until we see what...
I say we just give them a range, and then we work from there.
We'll work from there, but I did hear what Kathy said, and I think we would agree with that. There's some salaries or some total benefit packages on here that are higher than you're going to pay.
Right.
We can't do that.
We understand that, but I assumed you wanted to know what, you know, I won't name a name.
No, it's still good to see them for our...
You want to know, yeah.
Good information, we know where we're at.
That takes us back to the question, mission, though. If a candidate's coming only really for salary, that's not the right candidate.
That's not the right candidate.